Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. It's 7:30 in the evening. The record shows the councilors are here except Councilor Dix who had a family commitment today and is excused. Uh, councilmembers, I'm going to do a little bit of juggling of the, uh, agenda tonight. We're gonna add a resolution under, uh, for a TTM grant under item 7.3 under new business. I'm also going to do a little bit of, uh, moving things around when we get to executive session for our, uh, council session and for the urban renewal. I'm gonna try to get it so we don't have people running up and down because we have to go down to the event center. So I'm gonna try to get it so we, uh, don't have to have people running up and down. So just, uh, knowing and maneuver a little bit to, to do both things with recess and journey, you know, just move. It all works. It just, I just want you to know what I was doing before I did it. And, uh, so councilors, you have minutes from two previous meetings there. Do they meet with your approval?
I have a minute of 5:23, uh, 7B, Old City Hall.
Hey, hold on, let me, what page are we on here? 13, thank you. 13.
11 page, whatever.
13 of 101?
12 of 101.
Thank you, I'm just trying to get to the records. Okay, Old City Hall, okay.
I'd, I'd just like, uh, have my comments put in that, um, on the old and the new strategic plan and on the new budget, uh, nothing was mentioned about the need for parking. If we have an issue with parking, we need to have a project to address it.
Okay, is that okay with everybody if that's added? I do recall the comments.
Yes.
Karen, do you have a gist of the comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't attend that meeting, so I don't know. So can, can you repeat that one, Mr. Day?
I can tell you after the meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Also, I believe on that issue with the Old City Hall that, uh, Councilor Day voted no. And it shows unanimous. That's on page, the top of page 13.
That is correct. Do you have that, Karen, now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for following up on that, appreciate that. With those amendments, are they okay with everybody?
I would move to approve with those amendments.
A motion second discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed motion carries. Thank you very much. Kristin Larson from the Lucky Mute Watershed Council, good evening and welcome to the city council.
Thank you. Uh, another presentation I think will come up. So thank you very much for the time to speak tonight. I wanted to have a chance to come before you and introduce myself, the Watershed Council, and a project I'm working on here in the community. Um, and I also want to apologize, uh, last month I was supposed to speak and had PM on my calendar and not AM, so I'm really sorry for that. Okay. Um, so I'm just gonna talk briefly about Lucky Mute Watershed, who we are, what we do, and then focus on the project here within the community. And then I guess I'm directing Karen to, to slide for me. Um, so I always like to make sure we're speaking on the same, in the same language and, um, sort of some of the common phrases we use and start with, what's a watershed? Um, it is a area of land that drains to a common body of water, so lake, river, pond, whatever. And you can think about watersheds on multiple scales. So in, uh, you know, the middle of Independence, you're in Ash Creek watershed, and you're also in the Willamette watershed, and you're also in the Columbia River watershed. Um, so it's helpful to think about it that way. Um, thanks. And then in that sense, what's a watershed council? Watershed Council is a locally organized, non-governmental organization. It is run by a volunteer board and is designed to represent the interests and stakeholder groups of the watershed. We are, um, non-governmental, we have no regulatory role, everything we do is on a voluntary basis, and watershed councils across the state, missions will vary, but in general it is to improve the condition of the watershed in question. So there are over ninety watershed councils in the state of Oregon. Um, about sixty to sixty-five of them receive funding from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, the state grant, the primary state granting agency, and then next, and there's a little ring where we are, and the Lucky Mute Watershed Council in the middle of Willamette Valley. And so in our service area, we encompass the watershed through the Lucky Mute River and the house of the Ash Creek system, um, altogether, and then, and then some areas that drain directly to Willamette. So we run from the crest of the coast range to the Willamette River and parts of southern Polk County, northern Benton County, altogether, it's about three hundred and seventy square miles. And so we, the Watershed Council was recognized, um, formally in 2001. We are run by a volunteer board, we have four staff and some contractors, we are a five ones and three nonprofit, and we have our monthly board meetings, um, second Thursday of the month, if anybody's ever interested. And we are funded, all our work is funded through grants, donations, um, and then contributions of our partners for, for the work we do. And so I always like to stop and talk about why is there a need for restoration as opposed to just jumping into what we do. Um, and so, and this will vary depending on where you are across the state, but a lot of things are similar. In the Lucky Mute watershed, particularly historical splash damming in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, where they would dam up the river with the huge logs, pull up all the logs from logging, and then, and then, and then release them, often with the use of dynamite, down the river and use the river as transportation highway system. That's huge impacts on a river, um, and those impacts are seen to this day. Also, intensive logging, especially prior to the implementation of the Forest Practices Act of the seventies, uh, introduction of non-native species, weeds and basic weeds, um, agricultural practices, fast and in gate, some cases present. And then development and channel manipulation, particularly historical, or, you know, there was, in, in the Ash Creek, a history of scooping out the, the sediment from the channel and putting it on the side of the channel, straightening the channel, rerouting the channel, things like that, um, building up to the edges of channels. So we see some of those historical impacts from practices that we, that we no longer do. So these are some examples of things we do in the watershed, livestock exclusion fencing, removal of the basic species with contractors or volunteers. These are students from Lucky Mute Valley Charter School in River Creek Park in Polk Plantings with native species along Crest Creek in Kings Valley. And then in-stream habitat work, um, so for migratory fish like cutthroat and steelhead trout, quail salmon that move up and down the system, um, small and perch pole birds are blocked for them, so replacing those pole birds. And then, and additional, um, enhancements in the stream. So those are just some examples across the area of, of the type of work we do, um, in the watershed. So then next. So for, in this community, next, sorry, I thought I'd be driving. Ash Creek is that red line up there from the, uh, juncture of the Middle Fork and North Fork, Ash Creek, which is just above the Monmouth Public Works site, um, down to the Willamette River. So it's about two point eight creek miles, stream miles. Uh, next. And the org is primarily funded through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, the state granting agency, and civic power, plus back habitat funds, and then, um, all our local partners. So the cities of Monmouth and Independence, Central School District, the Ash Creek Water Control District, private landowners and donors, all contributed to make this project, um, happen. So this is the map of the area, again, that, that may stem Ash Creek from the middle-north fork confluence. Uh, we split the area in half, the red line is what we call revegetation area, where you see it's kind of devoid of, of native forest along the stream. That's about one point four miles, and then the yellow line is the stewardship reach, where you can see there is a mature canyon there, but we're just stewarding that and protecting it primarily from ivy that had infested certain parts and were threatening those trees that are present in, in certain areas. And then, um, those purple circles are kind of highlighting, uh, the city of Independence property, so Riverview Park and then the property of Gunfield Road. And then, um, the bottom frame here shows that stewardship reach up close, and the orange lines are city independence tax lots. So in that reach, there's a, a lot of different properties owned by the city across that reach. And then just gonna walk through some of the activities we've been working on since, um, a lot of this project is within the city, the city's a partner on the project and involves a lot of properties of the city. I want you guys to be aware of what's going on. So, um, we've been working on ivy pools, trash pickups, a lot of volunteer work. We, uh, submitted for this grant in 2013 and really started the work in 2014, so this has been going on in earnest for about three years now. Next. So an example of a trash pickup at Colonial Amistad, and then volunteers working on private property. Next. And then another, um, oh, and then, yeah. So planting recreation involves, um, controlling the basic species in order to get ready to install the native trees and shrubs along the planting area. So this is from the Sixteenth Street Bridge, uh, looking downstream towards Tomage. And then, um, sort of combination of chemical and mechanical control, those crews are on chainsawing the blackberry to chop up all those canes, uh, prior to putting the plants in the ground. And then the planting occurs usually in February or March. So first planting was 2015, and then we interplanted, um, in 2016 and 2017. So these are contracted crews working on Tomage Middle School property. So in that, in that one point four miles of revegetation reach, it's about twelve acres of property, um, public and private, and in that first year, we put in about thirty-two thousand trees and shrubs, um, to establish a streamside forest, and in the years since then, we've had some mortality and some adjusting of boundaries. So in all three years total of planting, we put in about sixty-three thousand plants across the revegetation area in this, in this project. And then plant establishment is basically stewarding those plants, um, multiple years after you planted them, so that they can establish and get free to grow. Once you put the trees in the ground, you can't just walk away, the weeds will eat them, and we all know that here in the Willamette Valley. So that's a combination of, um, again, chemical and mechanical control through keeping the grasses from swamping the plants, controlling weeds. Um, we also use volunteers, next, to, um, spread mulch around the plants to suppress weeds and conserve moisture. If you remember 2015, it was quite hot and dry, um, Ash Creek isn't the best soil anyway, so, um, I'm impressed how many plants did survive 2015, to be honest. Next. And then that stewardship reach, um, is primarily focused on ivy again, so in a combination of, uh, volunteer efforts to clip the ivy away from trees, um, we worked. So, um, this is an example of Ash Creek at Ash Street behind the elementary school. And when a lot of people think of Ash Creek, this is not the image they have in their mind, but I like to remind people that as an urban creek, there are some areas of Ash Creek that are quite nice and in pretty good shape, but on the right, you see trees that are, um, covered in ivy up and down the trumps, which threatens them as in terms of weight and pulling branches off, and there's like snow and, um, ice. So next. So we worked with volunteers to, this is at the Border Wiper Camp Brown, the cottonwoods there, and then around the edges and along the trail to the dog park to control ivy down there to protect those existing trees. And then lastly, we got a little bit of funding to work with Central High School. We really want to engage the students in this project, it's a huge section on, on school property, and we, we got a club going for a couple of years, but it's sort of fizzled, so we'd like to re-engage that if there's a way, um, so we're going to see if there's anybody out there that wants to, to work with that, but, um, we did have some funding to do an after-school club. So they built some, uh, bird nesting boxes and installed them at Tomage, and did some other projects, um, planting willow stakes and some monitoring for us on the project. And then, next, I just brainstormed, these are examples of what I see as benefits to the community from work like this. Um, coordination along that waterway of all cities, the school district, the water control district, the watershed council, in that common shared waterway is a kind of nice, um, opportunity. Um, cities both have requirements in the total maximum deal load, um, plan that they have to implement projects like this. Um, educational and volunteer opportunities, wildlife habitat, community beautification, water quality benefits, and, um, reducing stream erosion once those plants establish. And then just some before and after, so footbridge before, this is 2014, that's a few weeks ago. Uh, disc ball folks, I think, keep clipping the plants there, which is fun. Um, this is on the other side of the footbridge, uh, a few years ago, and then just those shrubs establishing, sort of widening that, that buffer there. We have floods there, I mean, you guys know regularly. And then at Tomage, um, Middle School, kind of looking in two different directions. So clearing the way that blackberry, um, converting that turf grass into a perky forest. Slowly. Next. Um, so that is the, the main overview of the project. Again, Karen, just our brochure and upcoming event we're having in October with the River Gallery, and just some other things, we, we partnership with the Polk's Water Conservation District, have the last float spot in, uh, Fourth of July parade, so the giant shadokfish, if you remember that from last year, um, we helped sort of clean up, start collecting trash and reminding people, it's time to clean up, and what's on the streets ends up in the creeks, is kind of our tagline. So we need volunteers, if folks want to participate in that in our groups that lucky in the parade that don't have their own float, we can use all the help we can get. Um, we're also organizing a nonprofit fundraising training here in the event center on the Y-Sticks, so if anybody's involved in a nonprofit and would like to participate in that and get in touch with me, and, um, sign up for other things. On our website, Facebook page, boards and committees, we love board members, so, and love donations, too. So you can always donate online, send in the check, or, um, I'm a nonprofit executive director, I always enjoy making that pitch, um, and then I take any questions if you guys have any.
Nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Kristin, thank you for taking the time to come in and share with us today, appreciate that.
Thank you for giving me the time.
Okay, great. Does anybody else who has public comments to make at this point?
Yes. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you, Marilyn. Didn't expect, didn't expect this. Oh, that's kind. Pardon. Signed by everybody. Thank you very much, I'll, I will read it in more detail, uh, at a later date. Okay, with that, I'm gonna continue us moving forward. Thank you, everybody, I do appreciate it. Uh, we have a branding project report today from Fisher Carlson, and so I think this is their time. Come forward, please. Good evening and welcome to the city council.
Good evening, thank you, it's nice to be here again. And I'm Shannon Carlson, this is my colleague John Fisher, we are from Fisher Carlson in Portland. Happy birthday, Mayor. We're really happy to be here with you again tonight, and we appreciate the time. As you know, we are working on the branding project, and we have gone through a very intensive process of seeking community input and relying on the guidance of the city as well as, um, seeking a lot of input from our key stakeholders, many of them are in the room right now. So we are thrilled to have arrived at this moment, where we are ready to present to you a new brand tonight, and so with that, I present, Independence, Oregon. And I'll turn it over to my colleague John, because he was really the creative force behind what you see tonight.
Thanks, Shannon. Oops. So, yeah, we've got, uh, this is our main logo, uh, our primary logo that we're gonna go through and show you all the iterations that we are working through at this time. Um, the goal was to, to use the Cooper Building as the, the hero, and this reflects not only the, you know, the historic aspect of the town, but also looking forward and looking up and what's going on moving forward, um, with the city. So next. Uh, the logo works really well in black and white, um, we also have a minimal size, we're thinking below one inches for those uses, a grayscale version that we created for you. And, um, there's also, we've created, um, different sizes, different lockups, um, where if it needs to be horizontal, um, that can work. And then we also developed a tagline, Oregon's story begins here, which helps kind of tell all the stories about independent Oregon, you know, whether it's somebody just getting started here, um, in the business, or it's about the Hops, and it's history here, or it's about the end of, you know, the trail itself. So this is a, so the nice stage which I kind of helps sort of solidify and tell a little bit more about Independence, or get people curious about Independence itself. Next. Um, I wish we could zoom in on this. So we developed a system that has, um, thank you so much, um, so that's perfect. Uh, so the very top logos right here are what are the secondary logos in the sense of promotion. We developed a system that focuses on the Riverview Park, um, since the Fiesta's, that's gonna be held there, then we have a, another one that works just for the Fiesta itself. Um, Fourth of July, we've got the fireworks going on there, um, the Hoppin Heritage Festival, we developed some, a nice illustration of the Hops, and for anything that's historic, we, we use the plies, they kind of still get there. Um, and then for anything that's departmental related, we still keep, uh, the structure of this, uh, the main logo, but change the bottom areas, so whether it's, um, a public system mill, or it's police, or library, or it's code enforcement, or public works, um, that, that system is very flexible and works really easily for each department. So next. And then we also developed, um, wavefinding logos, um, some of these will be used and some of these, you know, we will work together with Green Works in developing your, uh, wavefinding system down the road. So the idea was to create a consistent color palette, um, and also to kind of make sure everything is coming together. Zoom back down, I think, a little bit, so that, that's good. And this is your color palette, it's a little tough to tell on the screen, um, this is all based, um, mainly on the Pantone system, which is the system we use to kind of match colors that are solid. And then, um, we've developed web-based colors, um, as well as anything that needs to be done in four color for your printed materials, um, and each color is picked out, um, very specifically for those reasons, but the main, primary colors are gonna be the sky, um, the, the red used in the turret, and the black used, um, as a sort of rounding force. We've also developed, um, a typography system, so that if any materials that you're developing is consistent, um, the two of the fonts that are, um, very accessible, Roboto Light and Roboto Slab, and then we have a little, we'll give access to you for Nexus Rust, which is a little more character and structure, and then for anything that is, uh, you're trying to tell a story, is this nice Nexus script, um, which is very approachable and comfortable and easy, easy to, um, I think works well for the audience itself. And we developed a letterhead system, and a lot of this, so this is the stuff that'll go in your actual brand guidelines, it's a, it'll show how the logo works on a letterhead, how the logo works on an envelope, business cards, um, even, you know, for that matter, the app itself that you have currently, giving that a little bit of a fresh look, fresh colors, more vibrancy. Next. And then this would actually be, you can zoom in on that one, a little more time. There you go. So you kind of see that, you know, that this is a nice way for the, to give the app a little bit more interest, um, and a little more branded quality than it currently has. Uh, banners, now, I realize that you guys are probably not gonna be doing these banners here right now, because you have the system of illustrations going on, and, and, so this at least shows how it could work, or how the logos could work as a system to promote the different areas and aspects, from the Hops to the Riverview Park, um, to the, to the city itself. And we even, uh, were looking at just ways that you could do different monument signs, and this isn't a final design by NEPs, but we'll be working with Green Works on that, but this is an idea of, of how the logo could work, um, as a monument sign, or even simply, um, on the, the wavefinding signs that, that have the elevation and the population on them. And that is all. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Looks, looks great.
Thank you.
Looks nice. Looks good?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay. I'm gonna keep us moving forward under Mayor's report, uh, just, uh, three things I'd like to report to, the, uh, as you know, the, uh, when we are doing our, uh, strategic plan, we had Nancy Boyer from the Council of Governments, who was the interim person. Uh, Council of Governments, with which I serve on the Board of Directors, has just recently hired Sean O'Day, formerly of the Lead Oregon Cities, as their new executive director, and, uh, he's an attorney, we did hold that against him. And, uh, and he'll do a great job, he's also a lieutenant colonel of the National Guard, I've worked with him, he'll do a really great job for the, uh, Council of Governments, and it's good stuff. I've had the opportunity to assist Greg Ellis with a city council training for the city of Jefferson. They came to Independence and, uh, we were their retreat location, and so we had a chance to talk with them. And also been actively engaged with a number of legislators, Paul Evans and others, uh, in the LOC on the legislation rec, uh, related to recreational immunity, and, uh, that's a big one, and it's, uh, still hasn't passed, uh, through both, uh, sides of the legislature, but that's a very important one, and, uh, we're pretty confident that we'll get through there. But, you know, until it's done, if you know what I mean, it's the legislature, so I just wanted to, uh, let you know on that. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I think it's her report now.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, happy birthday, Mayor.
I detected tram.
I suspect it's a path to success for our staff. So we're making observations, unfortunately. So I, I just pulled our Shannon and John to hang on just a second, someone maybe just some of the follow-up steps are happening with the, uh, the branding, and that they have a loan private, and so I just wanted to, I know that Trump may have to be on the road. Uh, so just very quickly, we are meeting with our Green Works, which is our, our landscape group that we use for our art design, one of the elements of their work when it departs, master plan was to create a wavefinding system. Implementation of that system was waiting on the branding piece, so the next step is really just marrying those concepts, the wavefinding system beginning with brand, to start generating, deciding, generate information, interpretation of our, of our public assets. So we will be meeting with, together with them shortly, and before we lose our, uh, our creative genius, Mike Dinko, from the, from our X as well, so now we have a very near future to get that going. Also, our, our police chief, also taking it a bit, is moving to get the MOU on the, on city vehicles, so we're working, he's already got that started on the, uh, with our, with our signage being on for our vehicles. And then, uh, finally, we, we have, as I've mentioned before, we have opened up offices at the Independence Commons, we have a signage system over there that helps with all, it's the new brand, so we are sort of trying to move this on forward, and we have a fair amount of money budgeted next year to, to further implement the branding package, so with that, I'm just, if you guys want to get on the road, you're welcome to go.
Thank you.
I have a second question, is there, is there some sort of, um, are we gonna be rolling this out to the public, other than just putting up signs, are we gonna do some sort of promotion things?
We have, we are going to brainstorm a rollout process, I know they were already working on it, so I may not be privy to the details at this point, but, uh, there is a, there will be a more public rollout of the work we just started tonight.
I wanted to say that even though the reaction to the branding seemed anticlimactic, I'm really thrilled with it, I think it looks great, and I like the way that there are different applications that can be put to use there, and I can think of a couple of centerpieces that, that we still need to do, but that, I'm, I think that's a perfect fit, and I love the tagline, Oregon's story begins here, although some other cities may not like it.
That's the goal.
I'm taking a fight with some of those cities.
Thank you.
So, uh, we, uh, we have, we have a guest tonight also who'll be joining us for some of our work, and that is our newest, our newest acquisition of the staff, our Republic Works Director, who also has been here for many years, for quite some time, so Kai, if you want to, uh, stand up.
Sure.
Folks see you.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, Kai.
Thank you.
We, we got him from Sheridan.
Yep. He's old for us, so I'll just call him right back.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you, Mayor.
Kai has served for the city for thirteen years, before going on to Sheridan, is their Public Works Director. He has been greened up by them, and now we're ready today, he'll come back on the field, you know, for us, so, welcome back, Kai. So, uh, let's see, I'm gonna sort of pass my next item. Uh, per, per request of a couple of members of council, we have, one, distributed the, uh, the, the DDA disposition and development agreement with, for Independence planning. We have also posted that on our websites, and it's been up there since last week, and this is consistent with my conversation with the city attorney. Once we submitted this to the state as part of a, part of a branding package, it, I think we really felt it now, and it's purely a public benefit. So for that reason, and thank you for the requests from councilors, we've got it, posted that information, and I'll hand it out to you. See, uh, we had a, a review, I had us, we put together a, a keynote form, uh, you know, it's sort of a collection of, you know, we've been, we're meeting every, every once in a month, I mean, on Fridays, uh, we've sort of taken this period to reevaluate that program, so we had a forum a couple weeks ago, we had fifty people downstairs, and we're engaged in that, it was an amazing turnout, and a very engaged turnout, it was, uh, good information. So there'll be a lot of follow-up activity from that, and Ruben will be coming to you in the, probably a couple of meetings to give you a, a more detailed report on what's going on with the, the new and improved, uh, many. going on with the new and improved, you know, program. So that's ongoing. I think I mentioned, well, I mentioned I was going last time, so I had the request of Representative Evans and the parents of the legislature, and spoke to our eclipse planning, specifically, they were interested in the, the emergency planning surrounding medical insecurity, and so I spoke to those issues as best I could, and there were others there. So anyway, that, we're, we're doing a, I also invited them onto our event, so handed out material, missed opportunity. That's ongoing. We received today notice that the striker appeal has been voluntarily dismissed by the, the parties, so that project is now free to develop. That appeal was just signed by a party, it's been court, court, or the Luba, but now that is ordered, but that is pretty much done deal. We also received word just over the last couple of days that we've approved for a second year of funding on our rare volunteer, our rare intern volunteers, the American volunteers we have. So successors to the community of Emily will be, will be interviewing for them shortly, so we'll continue to support the IED, the downtown associations, as well as the county like tourism efforts, so we're excited to get a second year of funding on that program. We have passed the first hurdle in getting heartbreak funds, so we are very hopeful. We think going forward, it's going to be much more likely to succeed, so that was a grant award, if it goes through, a little over $400,000 to support development of the Riverfront Park in front of Independence Landing. So that's an extension of the trail in various entities in that location. So pretty exciting, we're crossing our fingers that this gets through final approvals. Is that a fair statement?
Yep.
Coming from the Public Works Department, construction crews are completing installation of a new large culvert pipe under Hawthorne Road at the Guest Curbs today. This is one of the last ones that's of the drainage work out at the airpark. This has been a part of a multi-phase long-term solution to flooding and drainage issues around the airpark. So this last phase will be completed this summer. So that's been many years of work in that, in that targeted basin, so we think that there's, we've done a lot of good in that area in terms of flood relief mitigation. We have completed our engineering review for the Dollar General project on Monmouth Street, so there they can start construction ahead of time. So that's on the, about 10th, 11th. So if you see that going up, you'll know that's about. And then we've completed our engineering review of Independence subdivision, which is just south of Sunset Meadows, extension of 8th and 9th on the south end of the community. So that's, the first phase is 33 single vending blocks, and we need one more thing for to issue permits, but it's, it's pretty much ready to go. So we'll be able to see that. That's developed underway shortly, and Guncle Road subdivision is making good progress and should be probably ready for filing its final plan this summer. So that's what I have on this report this evening, some questions on this.
Questions at this point?
I have a question about Dollar General, since you brought that up. I know it's next to Chase, is that correct?
Yes.
There, there are two lots, there is one that is street front and one that's behind it. Will it take up both lots or just the front lot?
I think it's both, show me.
I don't know for sure. I know one of those lots is, the street front lot is owned commercial, I think the one you're talking about is also very commercial. There's been talk about a residential development back where that trailer park would, but nothing is.
Does it still have a for sale sign on it that I've been buying it?
We can get at you on that. I don't know the answer specifically.
Great.
I had a question on, on your meeting notes. One of the notes was talking to Elks about their future. Well, no, I'm just thinking, pulls up, what are they doing?
Was that under my notes?
Yeah.
A management ten, no problems.
Well, I, I think it's no secret they've been having offers for a possible purchase of their company, so I don't know, you know, I don't think they're, I don't think they've agreed anything at this point. So they're, they're just exploring with us other locations in case that doesn't, where they could relocate with me, and so that's only, that's a net worth amount. So they've probably came through a little short of it in my mind.
But to network or something about, no, they're not closing.
Anything else? If not, I'm going to keep us moving forward. Chief Mason, we have your cleanup memo in the council packet, and I know you'd like to get a couple of hot spot, high spots, not hot spots, high spots.
Mayor Regard, happy birthday. And yes, Council, I did a couple of high spots. On May 20th, we have our annual cleanup day in cooperation with the city alignment and Brant Sanitarium. And we did do a couple of things different this year. One was because C Street was under construction, we actually made a last minute decision to intro the park on Osprey Lane, its first official use. Well, actually, it wasn't an official use, its first use, I'll say. And that actually worked very well because it gave the vehicles a place to be in queuing, waiting to dump their items without hogging up our downtime. However, it was a really busy day. It never slowed down. The whole day we had a line and a wait, and it was such that we had to stop the line from forming any further at 1:15, because it was obvious at 1:15 by the length of the line, we weren't going to be done by 2, which is when Brant has agreed they will stay until, which is two blocks. So at 1:15, we stopped the line from forming anymore, which I think probably upset a few people because I ran into them, you know, ran into the line. And even then, we didn't finish offloading all of the cars that were in line at the time when we ended it. So we went over it in time, but we did collect a lot of trash, 40 tons of trash were collected, 10 tons of yard debris, and a great half tons of metal. And then many other projects were done, which I listed in the report. Any questions on any of that that I can answer?
Questions?
How would you suggest changing it next year, or would you?
Well, one of the issues that we had, which kind of slowed down our progress this year, was that the Brant side of the operation was being led by someone for the first time. And so the coordination of garbage trucks and them going out to the dump was done in a way that left us at times with no garbage trucks. If we could improve that, that would help, it would keep the line going, but it's just grown to be an event that is difficult to keep up with. Mostly volunteer, you can see from the report that there is a very limited number of paid staff there that day, so more volunteers would help. We beat the drum every year trying to get more people to participate, but I, other than that, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how, I think that the Osprey Lane improvement would be good to try again, depending on what's going on, and how we drive them down there. Not sure if it would be the best thing, but.
Good job, though, that's a lot of traction.
And since we're a mutual admiration society, I want to congratulate you on your, your youngest graduation from high school.
Thank you.
Couple months ago.
Survived a trip all the way down to California and back since then.
Heard. Whatever. Senior all-ibr, thank you so much, Chief, appreciate it.
I have the next slide, if you're ready to move on.
Please do.
All right. I asked Officer Bob Barlow to give us an SRO update, and just as a reminder, our SRO program is a partnership between the Central School District and the City of Independence. Officer Barlow is the only SRO in the Central School District. He shares his time at all schools, it concentrates at Talmage and Central mostly, Central High Schools where his office is located. In way of introduction, Officer Barlow has been with the Police Department for over 19 years, and he's held many positions in those years of service. His current assignment to the SRO started two and a half years ago, but he was previously an SRO many years back. Officer Barlow holds a bachelor's degree in psychology, he is trained in mediation, speaks Spanish fluently, and has attended advanced SRO training. So I'm just going to turn him over to him and let him give you a report.
Sure.
Good evening, welcome to council.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation for the council members. Just want, for those that might not be familiar with the SRO program, it does revolve around three main points, which involve investigation, enforcement, of course, but also a lot of law-related counseling and special presentations that are, of course, usually law-related or some kind of conflict resolution related. So those are the three things that I constantly go back and forth between, sometimes all three on a daily basis. I just want to cover some of the main points here. Some of you may be familiar that Central High School has chosen as one of two schools in state Oregon for a special program for, you know, trauma-informed school, and so we've been going through the process of being trained, how to recognize the impact that various forms of trauma has on students, and how we can interact with them in such a way that it's not making it worse, as well as how we foster, I'm not saying the right resilience in, in students. And so as part of that training, I decided to respond to it by altering the environment in my office, to make it less traumatic, if you will, or less distracting, is really what we're discovering here. And so I removed, at the, you know, suggestion of our trauma-informed specialist, I removed some of the clutter that was in there, the school that uses it for storage to some degree, and I kind of redecorated it with some help, mostly from my wife, who works as a instructional assistant in the MES. She works in the resource room, and so she, she works with a lot of kids who, and in fact, have been impacted by trauma. So we, you know, I put some plants in there, and the, on the wall, we actually put some student art, that was a rendition of Vincent Van Gogh's Starry Night, I kind of like, it's nice and relaxing. And I also put in some various fidgets, or what you want to call stress-releasing devices, including, you know, coloring items and whatnot. Well, one particular one I wanted to illustrate for you was a root cube, and that was my wife's idea, I didn't have normally thought of putting a root cube in there, but one particular student, and this was going to relate to something else I'm going to share as well, that this was an investigation that involved relationship violence, which I'm seeing a trend increasing in the schools. And so I had the, the main perpetrator that was in there, and he looks over, looks at my little station I have of these fidgets and sees the root cube, and I could tell he was interested, and I said, feel free to, you know, check that out while, while we're talking. And so during that entire time, he manipulated the root cube. And intuitively, we're used to thinking of people making eye contact with us, or they're being honest, but in fact, it was, it allowed him to kind of filter out extra distractors and stressors and focus on the conversation. And one of the administrators remarked to me later on that he could tell that he was listening to what I was saying, as well as, you know, and I believe he was being more truthful about what happened. And so I just was caught by surprise, but I wanted to share with you that as an example, and I'd like to take advantage of that in the, in the future. So one of the things I may have mentioned last year was I had the goal of having lockdown drills in all of the schools, and I was able to accomplish that goal. We had all the schools practice at least once for lockdown drills, and Central High School did twice. What I discovered, where there are other kinds of drills that I had kind of taken for granted, that I need to work on to a greater degree, and one of those is simply the lockout drill, in which you might have a threat that's somewhere in the vicinity, and you want to lock all your exterior doors, prevent that threat from getting inside. Well, I've discovered that the schools did not have as efficient a process as at least I would like them to have, to block those doors in a timely manner. So I'm going to be working with them on that, as well as something that's called reverse evacuation. So if you have classes, particularly at the high school and the junior high, think of PD classes or science classes that are perhaps out by the creek or other areas, and most of them are in contact with a little radio system that we use, but some just use cell phones. And during a lockout, they would need to reverse evacuate into a more secure shelter. The only exception would be if there was a threat that was in their immediate vicinity, I would, you know, expect them to flee and to, you know, find a safe place to, to go. So that, those are a couple of different areas that I'm going to be working on, as well as just something as simple as room clearing strategies. And many of the schools do have good room clearing, that's if there's a student that's out of control or some other kind of issue going on in their classroom, how can they orderly remove all the other students from that, so that, that issue can be contained and you can have appropriate intervention, so. So over the course of the school year, I conducted approximately a dozen presentations. And I like to do presentations, but what I discovered is they are time-consuming and they also conflict with some of these other duties that I've been doing. But I wanted to let you know that my three main presentations during the school year revolved around drug, alcohol's back for consequences, relationship abuse prevention, which was a new one I added this year, as well as they developed a forensic science class in the high school, and they wanted me to do forensic evidence collection. It's actually turned out to be a rather funner class than I imagined. Those three main ones, particularly the drug, alcohol, and tobacco consequences, I've had to modify as we've had changes in our laws, and as we've had changes in, in actually the use of some of those substances. In addition to that, I've also did some presentations related to bullying and harassment, as you might imagine, and prevention of that, as well as many times they just want me to be in there for like a law enforcement career development kind of, mostly it's Q and A. The one unique presentation that I got to do was actually more of a community presentation, it's at the district office for youth forum, and we choose those, in fact, we have one coming up here, that they kind of choose the next topic, and we chose the topic, the impact of pornography on youth. And so I ended up being one of the speakers, as well as Robinson from the Juvenile Department. And what I was able to talk about was not only a number of cases, some of which Detective Sarah Sharp helped formulate, to kind of just give a synopsis of youth in our community who have been impacted negatively by pornography, and in fact, as related to crimes that were committed. I was also able to talk about a website called Fight the New Drug, which is related to a movement somebody might be familiar with, of looking at pornography as a public health hazard. And so it provides a number of resources, and I wanted, I wanted people to go away from that with things that they could actually research and look up, and actions they could take of this. So it chose another one, is people have asked me, what kind of filtering system, you know, what can I do? My, you know, student is accessing pornography, and there are filtering systems, various ones, with various amount of, you know, costs, but I did discover one that was called K9 Reprotection, I don't think it's truly law enforcement related at all, but it's a free system, it has limitations, but I've utilized it, as well as I know some other people have utilized it well, and so I, I talked to them about that. And I wanted to note that I'm not the only one that does presentations in the school. In fact, Sheriff Mark Barton came in and did one on cyber protection and whatnot, and at Independence Elementary School, as you know, even some of you might have read that in the Odyssey or Observer. And I was thinking, he was kind of concerned about coming in there, and there's no reason to be territorial about this, in fact, now I realize that I want to encourage, you know, as many people in this, particularly in law enforcement who are interested and have valuable presentations for kids, that I can connect them with that. So I appreciated him doing that, and he had, he has an outstanding presentation, much better than what I've had before, so. Just to give you an idea of crime statistics, I've really been pretty much the same overall in amount, but we had certain different ones that there were trends. And so I want to say that some of those trends were, that I believe were transitory, but others might be emergent, so I just wanted you to be aware of what some of those were. I had a number, or a much greater degree than previous years, of high school students and middle school students involved in delivery of marijuana, physically possessing marijuana, and also possession by consumption of marijuana, and including marijuana edibles, was probably the emerging trend that I'm seeing and was concerned about. This is as reflected in a recent survey that I was made aware of for Volcanning, 11 graders, that showed that for those who identified that they had tried marijuana at least once in their lifetime, increased from 29% in 2014 to 44% in 2016. So I think that, that percentage is reflective of the interventions that I needed to perform this last school year. I also had a number of repeat, if you will, offenders, usually don't get those, too many repeat offenders, but I had a certain number of individual students who had repeat offenses on a number of different things, and some of those, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. I want to talk at first about, I had mentioned before about the increase in relationship abuse. And so some of that had to do with assault and with harassment and other various kinds of related, and so I have seen an increase in that. The silver lining, I would probably say, is that there are more kids who are willing, willing to step forward and report that their friend is being abused, so.
Great. If you have a, if you have a last point or something you'd like to make, that's...
Okay, sorry. Yes, I just wanted to say that... Yes, I just wanted to say that I want the, there was a particular case that I did that was of concern. I wanted to let you know about that there was a 19-year-old male who was preying on underage girls, including not just sexual crimes against them, but photographing them in sexual acts. And so that was an investigation that took a number of months to resolve, and I needed the help of Detective Sharp in order to do that. But we were able to incarcerate that person, but that just shows that there's, that's part of the continuing trends that I'm concerned about. So, but apologies for going over time, but I'm excited to share these things with you. And is there any questions? I'm sorry.
Questions?
I do actually have one, because you had talked about the systematic lockdown in the event of a threat. And I'm wondering, have we done anything in our school district? I attended a training a year and a half ago on the, it was the Alice training, which is it's hard to hit a moving target and really just teaching kids how to, rather than orderly evacuate, get the heck out in all directions, you know, through distraction and evacuation with, you know, deserting community places. I know that at that time, the private police chief had said he'd rather spend hours looking for kids than, you know, unfortunately, collecting, you know, youth bodies. So I don't know if our district has made any move in that direction?
We have incorporated parts of Alice. We use the "I love you guys," but they're open to incorporating aspects of Alice. And so we did incorporate part of that with, there is an element of Alice that is, yes, you can get away, just get away. It doesn't feel like you have to be contained in this one particular area. And then there's also an element of resistance, and we use caution when we're trying to, you know, introduce that to the student body.
I just want to make a comment that I appreciate you, chief, and staff and council also for making this possible. We do this, city does this with the school district, and we're kind of solo in this with them. But I really appreciate it, because I think it takes care of a lot of things, as I've worked with you folks over the years. A lot of things get headed off early on, and they also get a chance, a lot of students get a chance to see officers as real people as opposed to something else. So thank you all of you for doing that. Appreciate you taking the time to come and visit with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, folks, Ms. Bush, I think we have a MyNet bond agreement agreement.
Good evening, and happy birthday, Mayor. So this is just the semi-annual debt service shortage agreement for MyNet. There's, the highlight of this is there was a 20% absorbent over required year. So that is certainly progress, and we certainly would like to see that. I think I included everything in the memo on the packet there, just if you have any questions.
Other questions for Bush this evening? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, I don't see any questions, and we've done this before, and we know what it is. If someone would make a motion, we could deal with this. Tom, you want to?
Sure.
Please.
I move to approve the MyNet bond reversal agreement, as requested.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Everybody okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is, I've got to get to the right page here. And Ms. Johnson, are you carrying this one?
Yes, I am. First, let me say happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You have before you a proposed council bill that would do two things. One, it would change the regular meeting time of the city council from 7:30 a.m. and 7:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. for both monthly meetings. Also, also, the Historic Preservation Commission has asked for consideration to allow non-residents to be members of the commission. They would like to have up to two members allowed to be allowed to be non-residents. And staff recommends that as well, as long as they are within the Independence area. And so that, since they were both administrative-type items, we put them both in the same ordinance, and we recommend that council pass the ordinance.
Clarification, if I recall correctly, then the historic preservation, other commissions have that same provision, benefit?
Yes, they do.
How many people are on that story?
Seven.
Seven, oh, okay, yeah. This is reflecting what we discussed last time, okay? Is everybody, Diane, are you okay?
It's all gasped from that.
Well, no, I saw 6:30, I thought we were going to stick to 7:30, but I see it's going to be at 6:30.
Yeah, is that the working?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's not a.
That works a lot better.
If council desires a different time.
They can always change it. So this is 6:30, this will happen a month from now, so it'll take a little while to implement.
It starts with the July meetings, not with any June meetings.
Not with any June meetings.
With any June meetings.
So we still have one more morning?
Well, I'm not sure it's on the agenda, but we'd like to ask you to go to an evening meeting next.
Right.
Because we have the budget.
I'll say that's the budget. Right, yeah. Yeah, that was, I was going to declare that tonight, and that next, so since we're talking about it, the next meeting, we will not have a morning meeting. We'll have an evening meeting, but it has to be at 7:30 because there was a, they had the official notifications, there's budget law, and they needed, we hadn't acted. So I talked to staff in advance. So the next meeting, the fourth meeting of the month, will be at, the next one will be at 7:30 in the evening here. And then once we go to July, then we'll go to the 6:30 evenings on Tuesdays, okay? And you'll get written notification on your... So I'll be clearly outlined in email? Yes. I just want to make, I just want to make that really clear, so that, so I think we've discussed this unless there's, if somebody would like to make the motions.
Certainly. I move to read the proposed amalgamated ordinance, Council Bill Number 2017-05 in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
I have a motion second. Second discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, motion carries. An ordinance amending the Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administrative, stating an effective date. The second motion.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2017-05 for the second time by title.
A motion?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. An ordinance amending the Independence Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administrative, stating an effective date. Can you undo the last one?
Yes, I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill Number 2017-05.
I have a motion, and a second. Is there discussion? We're all okay, we're clear? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Ordinance has passed, and will be given ordinance number 1560.
Great. Mr. Irvine, this is the addition, folks, that you have. This is a handout that was on your desk of the memo. Mr. Irvine will explain this to you. It was underneath, underneath the number. No, it was not in fact, it was a handout, it says, it's underneath the... Go ahead, Mr. Irvine.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mayor, it might be worth it. I don't know a lot for the videos.
Thank you.
So the, you'll see the staff reports. You're all familiar with our master plans that we do for infrastructure. Essentially, we've been on 20 years trying to identify the infrastructure needs that we should be considering building and putting in place in order to accommodate the future growth and development of the community over the next 20 years. Our transportation system plan was adopted last in 2007. There's been quite a bit of growth, both in population and geography within the community since then. We brought in some pretty significant shovel land acre, 67 acres in the southwest area after that plan was created. Also, as you all have probably noticed, in town, last year or two, traffic has been increasing. And then with the Independence Lightning Development, one of the recommendations from the Traffic Impact Analysis there was that the city update our transportation system plan in order to really take a holistic look at transportation within the community. This is both vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle transit, basically, any way of people getting around. We actually even do a little bit of looking at airplanes. But anyways, to take a holistic view of the community, how we connect the bond, of how we get people to and from the areas here. The Transportation Growth Management Department of the state, they are a kind of a combination of ODOT and the Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Conservation. They essentially work on the intersection of transportation and land management. They have a grant program that will fund updates to transportation system plans. So what I've done before is a resolution authorizing or requesting consideration from the Transportation Growth Management Department to fund city that depends for an update to our T S P. The great part about these grants is the, they really don't cash out, and the city's part, we do have plenty of staff time towards it as far as coordination, organizing community meetings and that type of stuff. But in terms of paying the consultants, maybe the grant covers it all. So that's a real move to us. So with that, do you have any questions that we have to answer?
Questions for staff? What would be the timeframe, when would this happen, when would we complete it?
So we would probably be here later on, we're worried about the end of summer. Usually it takes about a month or two to deal with contracts and agreements and scopes lined out. So really, it would be kind of late fall, early winter start, probably a nine-month to a one-year process. Because this is something where there's a lot of sort of technical work to be done, but there's also a lot of engagement, or always intended engagement with the community, both through surveys and open houses and things like that.
We've had very, very successful responses with these things in the past. And the magic words are here, too, won't cost us anything.
Well, it doesn't. It costs you staff time, and if you're already overworked, who's going to do it? That's a question I'd have. If we were talking on a private company, I'd say, "What's not going to get done?" Because you just threw a bunch of work at somebody, and I'm guessing it's you.
Yeah, and you know, honestly, there's, there's opportunity to shift some things around. You know, we got our new Public Works Director coming, and he'll probably have some opportunities for this. In terms of just a lot of basic logistics, we do have some administrative assistance from Michelle and some other folks who can help with scheduling and just kind of the basic logistics. And then really, you know, hopefully, my then Independence Lightning project will be totally off my plate where I'll be able to put this onto it. And so, you know, I think I'll look at the future and kind of...
Looks amazing.
Yeah, because, trust me, I think about that, too.
Okay, this is an action item, if someone would care to suggest. I have to look in your... Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution 17-1451, a resolution authorizing city staff to apply for a grant from the State Transportation and Growth Management Program. Second.
I have a motion, second discussion. I think it's all, I think it's a good idea. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We're going to get into that part of the agenda now. We're moving a few things around, so it devils me here. I'm going to pass the executive session for just a second and go down to council announcements. And I know Kathy Martin-Lillis wanted to raise a question in or ask if you have something you want.
Yeah, and it's one that I know that can be simply answered by folks who've been around a lot longer than I have. Because I know at one point, we kind of went out for a Parks and Rec bond, but that was really a facility bond. And we had at some point kind of looked at a Parks and Rec district in community departments, sort of jointly with Monmouth?
I can talk a little bit about that, Mr. Piney. Would you care to back me up here? One of the issues relating to creating a new government taxing district is that it involves dealing with a number of other, of the other taxing districts. And so it does take some pretty significant coordination. I don't know if that would force any of the taxing districts into compression in this area. And so, and then to create that, you have to either have the county create it, which they have generally not. If you do that, it's about to take a probably an initiative petition to do that. And then for the create that, you have to not just create the organization, there's also a, the taxing amount of dollars and cents. So I can get into lots more detail with that. It's not an undoable thing, but it is a...
I'm just kind of curious with, you know, these lost facilities that we count and say that equipment is...
Yeah.
Turn on our investments, so it can be...
Great. And we can, staff and I can get to there with the follow-up. It's great. Any other council announcements at the moment? Carolyn, you don't have an announcement?
I don't have an announcement, other than wishing you a happy birthday.
Okay, okay. There we go. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to, what I'm trying to do is put two executive sessions together, okay? And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to put this into the executive session and recess the council meeting. Help me if I make sure I'm doing this right. Executive session, recess the council meeting, open the urban renewal district, read the same document that I have to read for that one, for that executive session, so we can have one. Then we'll come back here after we've done both executive sessions, and then we'll have visitor come and approval minutes, and then go to the action items for the urban renewal district. Does that sound okay? Along the way, we'll have to adjourn the city council meeting, okay? So Karen, you understand what I'm doing?
I know that about. We'll follow along.
And the executive session is going to have to be downstairs in the event room, because we need some of that space down there. So is that everybody clear on that? I'm just saying that it's have to tromp up and down, up and down, up and down, okay? All right, so I'm going to, so the Independent City Council will now meet the executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S 1926602E, which allows the council to meet the executive session. Representative the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representative the news media specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject for the session is previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session. This time, the council adjourned the event center for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session has adjourned, we will return to open session in the council chambers. So what I'm going to do is I'm adjourning the city council meeting to go down to the executive session, and then I'm going to open the urban renewal agency, call it to order, and then I'm going to read the same thing again for the urban renewal agency, okay? So I'm adjourning council to the executive session. I'm now calling to order the Urban Independence Urban Renewal Agency. And the Independence, City of Independence Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in the executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S 1926602E, which allows the council, the urban renewal district, to meet in the executive session. Representative the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representative the news media specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject for the session is previously announced. Notice it will be made in the executive session. This time, the urban renewal agency will adjourn to the event center for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session has adjourned, we will return to open session in the council chambers, okay? So we're now all, all the people that are okay are headed down to the executive session in the event center. And let's take, do they need to take? And you can always keep it back with you if you need to. And let's take about five minutes to get from there to there, so if you have to stop. Does that sound okay? Thank you. You good? Karen, you good?
I'm just about.
All right. Yes. Okay. I'm calling back to order the Independent City Council meeting. Independent City Council meeting, would you like to adjourn the council meeting, then we can go the urban, then we can get back to the urban renewal district or something?
Oh, do adjourn.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, carries. Okay, council meeting is adjourned. I'm now opening the Independence Urban Renewal Agency. And let the record show that everybody here, except for Councillor Hicks, is here. Visitor and public, I'm going to change this for a second. Let's do approval of the minutes from last time. Are they okay?
Move to approve, minutes is received.
Second. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, Karen. Now let's go to the visitor and public comment. And Matthew Lynn, you have, this is under visitor and public comment, okay? And if you could look at your comments for three or four minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Mayor Ricardo, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Well, I thought maybe I would have an opportunity to speak before the executive session, so I assume at this point you guys have heard the other side of your story, or outside of the story. I just want to be available to answer any questions. I have some notes that I've sort of jotted down. I don't want to overplay, you know, my position. I know you guys are familiar with it. And I think after our initial meeting a couple weeks ago, I met with David Klein. The meeting didn't go as well as I had hoped. So I am expecting that he did not recommend the extension. I guess I'll find out on that. But basically, I just wanted to make my point that we, you know, we've been involved with this for a bit of time and certainly invested in this community over a duration. So, you know, I see a very successful story. I have Ray in the house with me running business now. You know, we turned a derelict building into a bona fide restaurant. It's taken a little bit of time, but, you know, this has not easily become parable to other buildings in town, mainly because it's not a breaking order physical structure. And also, it's different because we're in a dynamic need with the city in this note. I think that's I don't know if anyone has any further questions, but thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'd love to address any questions authority.
Questions at this point? They'll still be at the room if we have questions in addition at the moment. Under urban renewal, is there anybody else who has a public comment related? So what I'm going to do here, council, if you'll indulge me, I'm going to go directly to the item 5.2, which is the request, since he's spoken. Let's just keep all parts together. Does that sound okay with everybody? Okay. Mr. Klein, you have additional comments to make? You have a staff report here?
No, you do have a, I'm sorry, Ms. Lynn didn't wasn't aware of this, but there is a staff report in a full package of information that has been online and available to the public since last week. I think it's a fairly thorough report. It has attachments, including the various contracts and requests for extensions, and a fairly comprehensive chronology of events. So with that, you've heard from Mr. Lynn, you have my report. He is correct that we have recommended denial of his request. We think that this property, this is a good real estate market, and we don't think this is the time to continue to subsidize this effort.
Thank you. I appreciate the 54 pages of detail that you did provide in the council packet for us. Are there questions for staff that live in this matter? I see no one raising any questions. This is an action item. Someone would like to suggest an action. Page 48.
I'd like to take an action, but I would like to make a comment first.
Please do.
Matthew, I, personally, I really like you. You know there's a but coming on this. And the thing that bothers me is that in September of 15, there was a quote that was recorded here that I know Karen recorded correctly, which was, "We can all agree now that there will not be another request for extension. And this way, there will be nothing left with any uncertainty moving forward." And I understand that things change, but this has been, since the beginning of this, it's been nine years. And I think it's time for this to end.
Well, how to respond? I think she's just making a comment. I don't, this isn't back and forth.
And therefore, I move to deny the request as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I have, is there a discussion on this motion? I hear nobody stepping forward to say anything, so...
It's just, as easy as that? After taking a derelict building and having a bona fide business and there's no extension on a note that you're earning interest on, how is this even right? I have, I have full faith in the council that this makes no sense. If we need to go point by point over David Klein's personal list of reasons why this is a subsidy, then let's do that. This is not right. I can't stand for this.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Appreciate your comments. Is there further mention, is there further discussion by the council? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to deny the request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let you two, you folks deal with each other at the appropriate manner. Mr. Klein, I think I have, I'm not sure what you just invited us to do, but... No, I mean, whatever needs to happen. You guys can do whatever needs to happen now. I think we have a change order request. I'm not sure who's handling that today.
Actually, I have our city engineer present. She do have his written report along with the request. I know you probably have questions about that, so I'm going to let him, Steve Ward from West Tech Engineering, actually not a city engineer, but our project engineer on this project, so.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much. You may recall that you ordered a contract in fall of '16 for this project, a lighting to GT General Contract, GT General Contractor. When we put this design together back in the summer, the summer of '16, one of the key components was power trenching. And the city is, the city is exactly as a developer. And so, as a developer, you have to put the infrastructure in for the power trenching. Pacific Power was unable to give us a design. We knew conceptually where we wanted to put the design, but if you go out there and look, there's walls, there's conduits, there's all sorts of goodies out there for power, telephone, TV, all of that stuff. So when we put this bid together, we knew we didn't have the Pacific Power design. And so, there were some key components we left out. They were in the original budget and were well within our budget, but those components were sidewalks, street trees, landscaping, the vital of pavement, because we thought we might have to cut the streets to put the conduits in for the power trenching. Subsequently, oh, and the other thing I want to mention is you'll recall in the fall, you gave the city manager authority for changers of $250,000. We are now, we are now rapidly approaching $600,000 in changers. That's all work that was originally budgeted. It's just we couldn't bid it because we didn't know, we didn't know the scope of work because of the power trenching. And so, we have written two changers. The first change order was for the contaminated material we found on the site. The site change order was primarily for installing the power trenching. We wanted to get that power trenching done and get all the conduits in. This change order is to basically finish the project for all the frontage except for the top of the frontage. It puts the sidewalks in, it puts the pavement in, it puts the street trees, the landscaping. There's some other reasonable items that we have within this change order. But it's important to me anyway that we include this work because my whole concept is that GT General Contractors put some of this work in already in their original contract, but he'll not have a complete system. For example, we have lights, we had lights in areas, pedestrian lights, in areas where we knew we didn't have power trenching. Those lights are not going to be extended along Osprey. They'll all be connected. So my whole goal is to have GT be responsible for all of that work. So I'm requesting this change order to finish pretty much the west side of Osprey, and I'm going to say the south side of Osprey through block five. And that's what this change order request is for. Is there any questions?
So let me make sure I'm clear. I just want to be upfront. So this was already, this is what was in the budget and in the plan, but it wasn't originally bid because we didn't know all the details. So this is not, if you will, new money. This is money that we'd already planned to spend, but that we just hadn't put under contract because we did, we had some unknowns. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct. The good example would be, I didn't put the vital of pavement in because I didn't know where the power trenching was. And if I had to dig up the street to put power trenching in, I didn't want to dig up a brand new street. And the vital of pavement would have covered that sin if I had to dig it up. We thought we might get the power by that time, which of course we did, and then we wrote that change order and proceeded with that. But all this work was budgeted. It's just, it's just we didn't have a scope of work defined because we didn't know what the power trenching components were going to be. For example, part of this change order is to cross the park in September of this year because they wanted to go to the transformer, clarify a canopy. So we're looping the system. No one had any idea back a year ago. It was literally a year ago I started talking to Pacific Power, that we were going to have to cross the park to provide powerful load corrections for this facility. We just didn't know. But we budgeted money for those things. And I would say right now, I mean, if I could know right now, we're about $100,000 under what we had budgeted when we first funded for this project.
And is that after these changers?
That's after these changers.
That's going to get spent in an awful hurry, won't it?
$100,000? The heavy lifting is done. I mean, we're down to street trees, sidewalks, those types of things, you know, lights. And by the way, these lights are very expensive. These pedestrian steel lights, they are very, very expensive. But we're down, I mean, we got through the heavy lifting, which was putting the utilities in and that paper out and finding contaminated material. And honestly, this winter has not been kind to us. I mean, one of the items on this change order is we spent $18,000 to build the roundabout because we wanted to be able to finish the roundabout before the 4th of July. And so, David made the decision, let's spend that money so that we can finish the roundabout. Otherwise, we'd still be building. It's just now we're driving for the last, you know, three weeks to build the roundabout because the material was too wet. So we've made decisions to move this thing forward, but there shouldn't be, and we're not going to see any more big change order items.
That was my question. Do you envision any more change orders? And would, is there still room in the budget for additional change orders? Like a $100,000 worth at least?
There is room in the budget. And I guess what I would ask is, right now, we're pushing Mr. Klein's limit. We've spent about $240,000 or $250,000 limitation. I don't know whether we can expand that limitation, or for a second, so we can come back to you. But you understand these are firmly guided processes. The contractor's waiting right now. I mean, he's got a quarter million dollars for the work. And frankly, I want it done next week because he can't start it until it's approved. And so, that'll take some time to get that work done. We will, there's possibilities we will find minor things that we're going to have to either come back to you or have the authority of Mr. Klein for additional things. Just unforeseen conditions. Like the contaminated soil. Another example is here on D Street. We thought storm rings had normally been existed. And we're spending about $12,000 to connect them all together because...
The joys of the historic community.
Yes. And while the reason the streets is failing out there at D Street is because the storm rain doesn't have anywhere to go. And the water comes up and destroys the streets. So we're spending $12,000 to connect all that together. And those were just unknowns. We had no idea. But all the underground stuff is done. It's not really service type work.
Additional questions for...
How do we set up a, I'm not sure if this is for, a failsafe of some way so that if we've got this $100,000 buffer, that we know that we're getting close to that? Because I'm kind of not inclined to go that much farther on budget.
I track this budget every month. Right now, we are projecting that we're going to spend just under 3.2 million with all the work. This includes the old city hall party line. 3.2 million. Our budget is 3.5 million. So then we'd have savings in other areas. But every month, I track this budget because the money request goes to IFA. So we have to know where we're spending and where the money is. And so, we're tracking it very closely. And we've always known where we were with all this. The next big question would be, and honestly, costs are going up significantly. You know, the contractor said today, if you had to approve a chamber, you probably couldn't buy the concrete. And I know I work on the project with Salem, it takes all the concrete that the supplier can provide.
The joys of a booming economy.
Yes. And so, prices are going up. And so, these were well within our budget. And again, I've got one contractor responsible. I don't have two. We could have gone, the original intent was to go out and bid after this contractor was done, finish this, you know, in six months. Now I've got one contractor responsible for all this work, which is pretty important to me anyway.
One more minute.
And in all honesty, have you been 50%, 75%, 100% pleased with this contractor?
Well, we'll have to categorize that if we could. We've had pretty much full-time inspection out there. The quality of work has been very good. They are very slow and it's painful to watch, and they're very disorganized. And it's hard, it's wearing, I can tell you. They could be so much more efficient. But we're making sure the quality's there. If you go out there and you look at the concrete that's by the roof, it looks awesome, okay? And so, we're getting good work. It's just, why is it taking so long? All right? But contractually, they're not on the contract. They have till August to finish this work. And so, I wish they were faster, because I have other things I would like to do.
And that lack of alacrity is not costing us significantly?
It is costing you inspection. And it's important to me. The inspection is very important. And so, there is a bill for the inspection, but that's starting to slow down now. Because again, the underground work is done, so the inspector's not here full-time. I will tell you, when we're underground working, we're in that paper hour, and you're opening the thing up, it's lorry-holing, and they're letting crap fall in the trench. And we're telling them, take it out. I'm just glad the inspector's there because, because just before baby, I reviewed all the sewer tapes, all the storm ring tapes, and they look beautiful. So the quality of the work, I notice, good.
Just takes a little...
It should, you know, and our job is not to direct the contractor. We can't direct him. Oh, my goodness, we're proud of him.
Well, thank you.
Are there additional questions? And I don't want to cut off anybody, but I think you've got a pretty clear idea here. If there are no questions, what is, Karen, would it be just a resolution to approve the change order as presented?
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Could we get maybe $50,000 in addition to this authority? Which one is going to come back to you for unforeseen conditions? And I want to talk about unforeseen conditions.
Like 50,000 in addition?
In addition, we're not writing, but a board. Is that possible?
Like a one-time 50,000?
No, a kilo of 50,000. In addition to whatever we spent today, if I were to do something, if I have to build, do I need to come back to you? And I've already run it some. I just don't know what it is.
Well, my opinion, personal opinion, is that's what his limit is on spending with other actions out of the budget. And I would feel comfortable with 50,000.
Exactly. We can operate with that. So if your motion before you is behind, I helped you on explaining what documents I've looked for here. Which page? Okay, so I want to make sure that we have a clear item. So what you folks are asking us to approve is, is this, I want to...
As is.
Okay, so it's page 33? Okay, so what we're being asked to approve is page 33 as presented. And clarification, please? Is this page 33 plus 50? Is that what you're asking for? Or does he already have the authority?
I think, I think the council, the council board is correct. I think we did...
You already have that?
Except that there was a, there was a special limit on this project of 200...
When you added $250,000 to the original contract for it, so that was access, basically excessively normal authority, you expanded the original from 250 to 250. So you can either add it to this, or you can, or I can interpret your, 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 it's how they would be how you, you see it.
Does anybody have a problem with him having, doing the 50? Okay, and you want
Okay, and you wanna put it in part of this or you might just let him? I just wanted you to add it, just for clarity.
I, I would like to see it added.
Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. So we're gonna approve page thirty, we're going, actually we approve thirty-three and thirty-four. And Karen, I don't know how you're gonna list it, but plus an additional, uh, fifty and, um, how do you want it worded?
So the motion will be to approve the three bullet points at the bottom of page thirty-three. Is that what you're saying?
I'm, we're appro, we're approving the whole page. Is that correct? Help me with what I'm trying to get here.
Right now today, I need a change order approval for two hundred and eighty-one thousand, forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents plus the opportunity for another fifty thousand dollars for unforeseen conditions that may come along.
Is, is that, is that page thirty-five then?
I don't have that.
Thirty-three, so change order number three.
Change order number three?
No, change order number three.
I'm agreeing with change order number three. You guys presented plus adding fifty thousand additional spending authority.
Is that okay?
One-time fifty thousand additional spending authority.
Well, you want cumulative, is that one-time or cumulative?
Whatever. I, I...
Lifetime total of?
Yes. You guys are saying aye.
Cumulative limit?
Yes.
Collective limit, yes.
Right. Okay. So if you wanna make the motion, I'm sorry, I was getting to the wrong page. It's my mistake. Go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve change order number three as listed on page thirty-three of one oh one of our council packet with the addition of a one-time cumulative fifty thousand dollar authority to the city manager for additional change orders above what is listed here for order number three.
Perfect. Is that okay with everybody? I have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
We'll have a question, but I'll wait until you get the motion and second.
We do have a motion and a second now.
Okay, good. So where does this put us really to this three point five million?
We are just under three point two right now.
Inclusive of the work.
Inclusive of the parking lots, yes.
But that's inclusive, inclusive of this change?
Parking lot.
But not the fifty thousand?
Parking lots will be separate, they did, they're moving back to you.
Yes.
That's, that's current allocation assessment for the parking lot.
So the parking lots are just not, it, it just included, but we're not actually gonna do those?
Not yet.
Right. That's what I, I wanted to make it clear.
And that, that part is not included in the motion, certainly?
Yeah, understood. Okay. Okay. Thank you for going through the, trying to get to the right piece of paper. I have a motion, second. Is there any further comment? I hear no further comment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Um, so folks, I don't think we have anything else. I know a number of people like to advance, so if someone would move, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.